Oh, yes, it's been awhile to have one of these, so. That's right. Alright, everyone, so this is, um, just for audio 10 minutes. The person as well is on WebEx. Um, so here are the rules for speaking, to ensure the maximum opportunity for all of them to be heard. Um, but following that, we're going to apply those joining the meeting. I would like to buy my microphone to online. Anyone wishing to speak about the type of question you can chat box or raise their hand, raise hand function. Any online meeting platform, which is indicated by, uh, leave yourself at the appropriate time. Chair, if access to the phone or you have comments indicating this person is someone or nine. This will show the bottom of the person calling that number which is the screen. The mute on, uh, on your telephone person start six. We wait until recognized by the chair to begin. All comments, concerns, and questions shall be two minutes or less. Please call for to help attend all attend. All attendants have the opportunity to hear the presentations, comment, report. Please pay attention, rest unmuted until the right. When you are recognized, unmute yourself. Both the board made any action on any agenda items, as a private state law. Interes没关系, the specifics were not noted on this event that cannot be voted on unless added. A two thirds vote, um, five. Nine minutes before the meeting to add nine. They committed on major portion of the. So. Under orders, uh. Uh, first agenda item to try and allow the main board, which we do not attend. Uh, reservation. Before we get to that, right, um, we currently have five board members here. We not have four.
Four, actually, there's only four now.
Four board members, so we do not have four. What that means is that the board will not be receiving any actions on any of the things that I. So that's, um, what that means, what that, with that said is because we can't take action on presentation or on resolution. Um, I was discussing with the board, and what we. Central members that are here. And then after that, we'll go through the reports by the senior official. Anything else in regards to, um, presenting and board business, we will have to defer to the next. We have a majority here, so that we can't do action. Apologize, we have one member texted that, um, one is out of town, the other is out of. Four actually out of town, one is out of state, one is in a different. So my apologies. Please, I can't come forward, that we cannot do anything. So we're looking forward in that direction, so we're interested in. And also, I guess we're in, um, Rachel here. The other person. Right, I didn't hear you on the phone line, but. Here that, um, any questions from everybody, just so you guys are aware.
Can you test to see if, um, if the Vic can hear you?
Officer Atkins, do you even hear me? Raise your hand.
Barely.
Leave yourself and just let me know. Okay, I'm gonna check the audio. But yeah. Don't have that board, so we don't wish you, you guys could present, but we couldn't take action on it. So you guys want to, you can, but it's really, we're not going to get. A while, I don't, we don't want to waste your time, so we made the assumption that you could come back next time, but it's up to you guys. I'm sorry? Board members, are you available for that?
I'd want to.
But he would still have to. Didn't you ask a question?
Yes, I won't ask.
Okay, we have one board, we have one presentation.
Okay.
Who is?
The other members, but they have quite a lot.
They possibly could. So we have you presented, and we may have board members come in, and we may have to ask you to come back. Would that be available to the folks?
That would still be.
Okay, it's alright. Next time? Yeah. We can work together next time.
So sorry, you guys, so sorry.
Okay. Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay.
That, please, more, that's sure.
Yeah, no, forget that. Thanks.
Call you later.
Okay.
Sound is mouthful, okay. Testing, testing, test.
Okay. Okay, better. Okay, people can, okay.
So folks, if you did not hear me online, um, unfortunately, our, our neighborhood board does not have forum. So we cannot take any actions on presentations today, or any of the board business resolutions that we have listed. So after discussing things with the board members who are present, what we will proceed with on our agenda today is for the reports. From the government, US Army, police, HFD, um, state and county leaders. And we'll go up to that point, and then the rest of the, um, presentations and board business, we will defer to the September board meeting. So we apologize for the inconvenience, we have two board members that are out of ones off island, the others are preparing to not attend today. So because of that, we are short on forum, which means we cannot take action. So with that, folks, um, just wanted to let you know. And so we will move forward in our agenda that we currently have, which is the swearing in of, um, board members getting to be sworn in, which is basically myself.
Yeah.
So I was doing that now.
Okay. Okay, so raise your hand, you can hold on for that, just, yeah, raise your hand. I solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support.
Faithfully, faithfully support.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Hawaii.
Of the state of Hawaii.
The charter and laws.
Charter and laws.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
Of the city and county of Honolulu.
And the provisions.
And the provisions.
Of the neighborhood plan.
Of the neighborhood plan.
And will conscientiously.
And will conscientiously.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Koholalo. Yep, perfect. Okay.
Okay, now we will move on, can we, can't we do election of officers, David?
Nope.
We will skip the election of officers for now, that's what happened in place. One more. Okay, um, we will go to monthly reports. Um, so we'll start off with HFD. We have a representative. We have a representative from HPFD.
No, there's nobody online.
Okay, no one here and no one present, so we will move on to our officer acting from HPD, please go ahead with your report.
Good evening, I'm Officer Jared Atkins with the District Four Community Police Team. The report is for the month of July, there was two motor vehicle thefts versus for the previous month. There was one burglary in July versus six the previous month. There were fifteen thefts in July versus fourteen the previous month. There were six car break-ins in July versus five the previous month. And there was one robbery in July versus zero the previous month. And then as for the stats related to last year, the motor vehicle thefts are the same. There were four more burglaries last year. There were five more thefts last year. And there were twenty more car break-ins last year. That's all for the stats, I can take any questions or concerns.
Okay, thank you, we'll start off the board of questions for Officer Atkins. Okay, um, for members of the public in person, any questions for Officer Atkins? Get here and it's none, um, any questions for members of the public online? Casey Connors, I see your hand up, please proceed with your question.
Thank you, Officer Atkins. Two things, um, first of all, have, um, you and, and any of our, the police departments our side. As you know, met with the homeless outreach social workers yet? HHHRC would be the one from the state that's supposed to come out on Wednesdays. Took Koholaloa, and, um, I don't think there are any, um, uh, social workers from the city and county at all assigned to our area. So the first question is, has you, have you met any of the, of the homeless outreach social workers, or now are you working with them? And the second question, um, is, um, do you have any stats on the number of traffic accidents and deaths in our area? Um, because I talked to my friends, everyone from the mainland, and when I visit, we have way, way, way more, um, deaths than traffic accidents on our side. And, um, I don't see or hear any stats, and would that allow us to have more police? Um, thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, so we do work with, uh, the social workers, we typically go out, um, we meet with them either once or twice a month, and we'll go out to the different areas within the district. And offer outreach services, we just did it, I believe, last Wednesday. Yes, we do go out with them and, um, officer services, offer services. Um, right now, there's no shelter space available, so it's kind of hard to, uh, placement for people. We checked last, last Wednesday, we had three people that wanted to go into shelter, however, there were no, there was no space available across the entire island. So I hope that answers your question, yes, we are working with them. And then as far as traffic stats, um, I can look those up and get them to you next meeting. As far as that getting more police out, it may get, it may get the traffic division out a little more to conduct more enforcement. If, um, the stats start to rise significantly, that can occur. And we, um, District Four officers would also begin, um, taking more enforcement if the stats had started to, um, go up more than they typically are at.
Um, our side has, everybody knows several people that have died on our side, I've, every couple of years, and apparently that's unusual across the US.
Um, I don't know, I can't speak to that, I, I know there are traffic fatalities all over the island and the nation. So, um, I, I mean, I've, I've been working in this district for almost, for about ten years. And they don't seem to be more out of the ordinary than usual, I mean, of course, people do die every year in Koholaloa, every year in, uh, traffic accidents, but. I'd, I'd have to check the stats to see if they've gone up significantly, but if, from what I can remember, it doesn't seem like they're anything out of the ordinary.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, moving on to Catherine, please proceed with your question.
Uh, mine is also a traffic question, uh, perhaps you can settle a sort of a dispute. What are the rules or laws concerning mopeds and all three of the tunnels? Um, I guess I've been under the impression that mopeds aren't on there because they don't belong on there, but maybe I've been wrong on this one. And this stems from, um, a young kid on his moped yesterday who was up there, but did a multiple things on the roadside, it'd be very sketchy and dangerous. But anyway, that aside, what are the rules and laws, are there any? Um, it strikes me as a terrible place for a moped to be, but.
Yes, so there, there is laws, it's, it concerns the displacement of the motor, um, basically, so there are mopeds out there, they're called motor scooters, they look like mopeds, but they are rated to travel on the highways and freeways. Typically, they, you know, they have, they have a bigger engine, so they can go faster, but, um, smaller mopeds are not permitted on certain areas, like the H Street, there's some parts of the freeway in town. I have to check on the Leaky Leaky and Polly, but I know the H Street for sure.
Can, thank you, but can you check, I'd be curious, particularly the Polly and the Leaky Leaky strike me as deadly places, um. You know, you could really ruin the driver who's going to hit somebody when you talk about an accident. And, sorry, some, some of the moped people are really, you know, really don't follow rules, and it's very hard to work with them on the road, but thank you for your time.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure they're not allowed, but I don't want to say for sure, because I know there are minimum speeds that you're supposed to travel, like on the Polly, you're supposed to go at least forty miles an hour, you know, and most mopeds can't do that, so.
The same thing on the Leaky, right, so I, I mean, I just don't understand, but anyway, thank you for, for, if you could look into it, I'd be curious.
Yeah, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you very much, um, we can have another follow-up question from board members, how many, please?
Thank you, um, I have a question about, um, chicken fighting. And, you know, after the shooting on the other side of the island, I have noticed an increase in chickens on our side of the island. And in residential areas, and I know of one in Kahuku where your officers have come out, but there's no citation, and there doesn't seem to be a penalty. My concern is, we don't want to see happen in our communities what happened on the other side of the island. And unfortunately, cockfighting and the gambling is not going to bring good things to our residential community. So I have a concern, and I'm not sure what the answer is, I wish there was a way that animal control could simply come out. If they see more than, more, more than two, I wish they could just confiscate them all.
Yes, so, yes, as a result of the, the murders out in Wainai from the chicken fight, we have stepped up enforcement with the Narcotics Vice Division. So we actually, um, what kind of happened was is, um, the Wainai site kind of shut down, so they began moving to our side. And the rumor going, the rumor going around was that, you know, District Four was open for business as far as chicken fighting. So we began stepping up enforcement, and we did arrest some people in the Kahava area for it, and we have been going to other areas within the district, including up north. And, and, you know, taking enforcement action, the best thing to do if you, um, think one is occurring or about to occur, or you know when that may occur. Simply you can call nine one one, or you can submit an anonymous complaint online at HPD.org, and that will go to our vice division. And then we can take appropriate action from there, but yes, that is a major concern for us because of, you know, what resulted in Wainai. So we have been taking, uh, more action than usual.
Thank you, my, my question, I guess, is, um, we don't always know when the fights are happening, but we do know when neighbors have twenty or thirty roosters. And that's my question, is how do we get the roosters gone?
So by law, a household, if it's, if it's a residential household, they're only allowed to have two chickens, right, by law? So if they have more than that, you can call in a complaint, and, uh, an officer will come out and investigate it, and if they find a violation, they can issue a citation for it.
That hasn't happened, but, okay, thank you so much.
Well, uh, you can, you can contact, um, I'll put my email in the, um, in the chat, and you can email me further for, you know, this area, and we can look into it further.
Yeah. Perfect, thank you so much.
Hey, do you have any, um, questions for members online, uh, union members online? We, if you ask one community members coming, any questions for HPD, for union members in person? Hey, do you hear me? Okay, I'll relay the question, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It says crouching lion, it says a lot of statements party, don't go out here, they need to go out. They're not going to enforce the, take down the signs of business consulting, and I'm not, I'm actually the over there. We can't go over there, it will not, of course, I came to them, I'm sorry, that was, that wasn't necessary, but why do you have that sign that's not going to be put major, why are the women go up there?
So the question is about, um, the trespassing, with the sign that says, you know, no trespassing there. It's not really enforcing, people are still going up that trail, um, specifically, why have the signs that they can't be, not be?
Sorry, you're kind of breaking up, but you're asking about the sign that, um, crouching lion, is that what you're talking about?
The signs that crouching lion. It's the trail that was signed. People still go, yet, um, all the time, they're still going, we, they've noticed that police do patrol the area, yet you guys aren't enforcing people to not go out there. And if that's, I mean, if they're not going to enforce it, it's basically, I'm, I'm going to stop pushing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to look into that, um, because I, I know there are some trails that, you know, relay no trespassing, but they, they've turned into hiking trails. And I, I believe, um, I don't know if this is true for the, the crouching lion area, but we, we were, uh, directed, you know, that it's by Dylan, I believe, that you don't enforce on the certain hiking areas or whatever. But I have to look into that, I don't know about that part, and, uh, I'll look into it and get back to you with an answer in the next, uh, meeting.
Thank you. Any other question for people, members of the public in person? Alright, here and seeing them, thank you very much, Officer Atkins, we look forward to your report next month.
Thank you.
Thank you, moving forward in agenda, do we have any, uh, representative from the United States? Do not see anyone in person or online. So we will continue forward in our agenda, um, cannot do finding, finding vacancies, we cannot do initial committee, uh, procedures, so we will do government reports. First and foremost, we, we, uh, rare Mayor Rick Banchiari's representative, Kat. Congratulations on your new elected, um, oh, um, yes, and so you're gonna. Please proceed.
Thanks, Pani, good evening, everybody, so I'm going to provide some kind of general citywide updates, and then I'll get into the specific questions from the June meeting. Okay, so this month's highlights, highlight one, protecting our paradise. Earlier this summer, the city entered into agreement with a security company to provide a specialized security team to enhance public safety efforts along Kohiu Beach. These additional efforts combined with the continued success of the Safe and Sound Program are creating a friendlier, safer, and more secure Waikiki for both visitors and locals. Update two, the mayor announces key hires. So in July, Mayor Blangiardi announced key additions to the city's cabinet leadership team, Jean Albano will join the Department of Facility Maintenance, and Dita Holyfield will join the Department of Enterprise Services. Both as the director designate, so Jean's an accomplished electrical engineer whose work experience includes Kakaako infrastructure redevelopment, the Honolulu Fire Department, South Street Headquarters, Diamant, Talava Baseyard, and more. Dita spent the last nine years as a general manager of a local radio station owned and operated by Salem Media Group, in addition to her duties as a radio DJ on Country ninety seven five. And since nineteen ninety seven, has managed her own successful live events, which include the All American Rodeo, the state's largest rodeo show. Update three, Skyline, the city is pleased to announce that Skyline has seen one hundred seventy thousand plus riders during its first month of operation. With students heading back to school, residents have more reason than ever to try Skyline. Update four, on July seventeen, Governor Josh Green signed an emergency proclamation to combat the escalating affordable housing crisis in Hawaii. Now, a collaborative effort by the state and all four counties will seek to streamline the regulatory processes for development of fifty thousand housing units over the next five years. Representatives in the city's mayor's office and the Department of Planning and Permitting will work within the state's Build Beyond Barriers work group to fast track affordable housing projects and speed up the construction of new housing units. Update five, final one, uh, as housing costs increase, some of our neighbors are struggling more than ever to pay their rent and utility bills. To reach the total, eight community events for the rental and utility relief program, we held this summer along with partners. They were part of a temporary reopening this summer funded with twenty-five million dollars of federal funds. More than six hundred Oahu families apply for the short-term rent and utility, uh, help at these events, and they have helped more than eighteen thousand Oahu families stay safely housed during and after the pandemic. I'll drop a link to the, uh, newsletter, and you can read the full stories and more city happenings. The second, uh, update is from the Board of Water Supply. So every five years, the Board of Water Supply reviews its current rate schedule and structure as part of a cost of service study. BWS operations are funded by ratepayers, these rates fund capital improvement projects, pipe and pump replacement and repair, facilities maintenance, water quality testing, conservation and watershed management, customer service, as well as general operations for the agency. A semi-autonomous agency of the city and county, the BWS does not receive funding from the property tax collected by the city. As part of this rate-setting process, BWS would like to present each board with the proposed five-year increases. The presentation is about twenty to thirty minutes, not including, uh, Q and A. BWS apologizes, apologizes for the length, but it's due to the information that they believe is necessary to share with you and your community. They're looking to schedule presentations during the months of August and September. Uh, if you're unable to have BWS present due to other critical issues, there will be three meetings in August that the community can attend, and I'll, I'll drop more, um, links to that in the chat. And the BWS is also open to coming to a special board or community meeting if one is planned. So to schedule a presentation from BWS and to ask any questions, please contact Kathleen Pahinui, and I'll put her phone number and her, um, email address into the chat box. Okay, from last meeting, there were two departmental issues, issue one, um, vacation rental vans, we, uh, someone asked. People who rent out vacation rental vans, do they need a permit to operate, and are they legal? The Customer Services Department does not issue any special permits for these vehicles or for that business use. The second issue as to car registration, um, a member requested for a car registration kiosk in the Koholaloa area. The reply was that, so the Customer Services Division, uh, Department will relay this request to the city's vendor. Because a private vendor provides this service, the vendor will assess which locations are best suited for a kiosk, but again, they did pass the request on. So those were all of the departmental issues from last month, I'm happy to take any questions, um, and I can report back next month.
Okay, thank you, and Kat forgot to mention she is now the big. Okay, with that, uh, any questions for board members?
We have one on September for the, for the freight hike.
So we should kind of contact Kathy, then we can, uh, put them on, right?
Yeah, right, to schedule, yes.
I think it's gonna be a shock to people. I think we need to invite them because it's gonna be a shock to people, to, one, that their rates are the typical, so opportunity to.
The other question, public members. Okay, how about for members of the public in person, we, we question. It's coming out.
Sure.
One thing, and the other thing is, you know, a lot of people don't give out, so that's great, um, what would be, I know.
I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing the audio.
Really fast. I think it's really, um, the city providing the rentals, you know, pre-rent things like that for now, for families who are finding it very difficult. Uh, my question was, you know, is there any other way, uh, can they, whether they don't, to sign forms in order to get the payments? And how many months, uh, is obviously conditions, what are the conditions? Uh, is there a label, obviously, for, a capping label for giving the funds?
I'm sorry, I had a really hard time hearing that, Judy Ann, did you?
Yes, um, it was about rental assistance program, um, if you had any specifics on the levels that are, um, available, like, you know, capping for income if they're percentage of assistance based on income tax or things. Where we need to go and apply and sign the forms and.
Okay, okay. Yeah, just more information on the rental and utility relief fund, got it, okay.
In regard to rent and utility support, if someone is looking for that, we actually, on June twenty fourth, I think it was a Saturday. we actually, on June 24th, I think it was a Saturday, we had a big open house and CNHA was here to help people. We still are helping people on rent and utilities every day. So if you want to call us and come in and make an appointment, uh, we can sit down with you and help you apply. Did you hear that? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for members of the public in person? Yes, you can.
Want to find out any updates on when our park will get its lights back? For like nine plus eight and people wrong. Yeah, they go off, they smoke, they all.
Have this follow-up questions for the Ha'ula Community Park.
Which park is this?
The lights and when.
It's the field light.
The field lights at the Ha'ula.
The field light?
Next to the elementary school. Yes, field lights, um, for the courts. Right?
Right, for the whole park, for the whole park.
Sorry, for the whole park. So there were supposed to be, I believe, in the last couple of years, they're supposed to have been proven already. This follow-up question to see when.
Got it. Okay, so, uh, the lights at Ha'ula Park.
The field lights.
Specifically.
Specifically the field lights, and the field and court lights, got it.
Oh, sorry, the field lights, of course. Okay, the other question, for members of the public in person. Okay, let's move to, um, we'll start with Catherine.
Uh, hello, mine is about Ha'ula Beach Park. I have been on a mission to have re-erected the signs that were rusted down that designated as a park and what, uh, is allowed in the area. And I did talk to a, someone at the district park. And she said that sometime in the next month. But these two signs have been down for almost six months now. And, um, I'm, I also at this time would like to, I don't know where to suggest it. There should be a contest perhaps to make a, uh, sign that could be put up where seals, um, you know, land, that just basically says, don't touch. You know, and make a really good don't touch sign. And I report this after coming across three boys literally touching, posing, and poking the seal this last week. Uh, and they, they got a certain piece of my mind and I found the adults responsible for them. Um, but honestly, it would maybe they need a, you know, a visual, Snapchat visual, something they can grasp besides common sense. Uh, and I'm hoping that my efforts to get those signs up and maybe just, you know, make people think it's a proper park. It is. That's all.
Got it. Re-erecting the signs at Ha'ula Beach Park, recommendation for a don't touch the seal sign, can a contest be held?
Thank you.
Okay, next one.
Thank you, um, moving on, JC, I see your hand up and I hear your two questions in the chat. Would you like to ask those questions to Kat?
Yes, um, thank you, Kat. Um, from your explanation, does that mean that vacation vans are illegal? And if.
I, I would defer to the, to HPD on that. CSD just doesn't issue permits for them.
Okay, okay, so then I have to go back to HPD. And then are there any updates on, um, illegal vacation rentals in Kohala? How many have been shut down this past summer? How can we find, um, they're booming? And, um, my last question would be, um, I saw in the media things about the mayor's new program for good jobs in Wauhui, it's $5 million. And, um, can you tell us what jobs they are? The link on KITV is not working. Of course, any, um, training for film, TV, um, for our musicians to get their streaming revenues. Um, those kinds of things. And where are they located? Are they located in an area that's easy for our community to get to? And how are they being, um, how are they or will that be promoted? Um, thank you so much because often there are new jobs and our area doesn't hear about them. Our work links was closed down in Ha'ula, closed down in Kandoe, closed down in, um, in, when we're community college. So I'd love to learn more about that new program. Thank you.
I'll, I'll relay that to the Office of Economic Resiliency and then I'll drop a link in the chat as well.
Okay, thank you. Just a follow-up on the seals. Um, there is a hotline that you can call. It is 888-256-9840. If you call that number, um, they will come out and put up signs and rub off the area to make sure that the seals are untouched. Um, the signs are actually stored here in this, in this building. Um, but they don't want everybody just making signs. So if you call that number, they will take care of it for you. So you don't have to do that. Um. Let me just sign up the phone number. But yes, call that number, folks, and, and they will take care of it. Just leave it to them.
One more time, the, one more time for the phone number.
Hawaii Marine Animal Response. And it's called the Hawaii Seal Hotline. Okay, moving on, any questions, uh, other questions from, um, members of the public here? Uh, online first. Okay, here in Seana, we're reporting person, please.
I'll be. But. The issue will be issued by, you know, giving the names to the parents of those children or who maybe they belong to. And then finding the parents. I don't see any progress, though, just putting up signs, and they're all really focused, you know?
So Kat, my question was, um, is there any way that if we find youngsters violating or anything like that, if the parents can be notified or fined so that there is a punishment attached to the crime? Um, and we will have our seal expert here come in and shed some light.
So, uh, we have a response, has responders. And in the event that they are, he was sealed, you can call HPD to get an immediate response. Um, there is all a app on your phone to download for DLNR. And they will definitely run, if you can take videos or photos of them. Um, the, uh, the people who are appropriate with, don't care, will take care of them. They'll go there.
Thank you very much, okay? Um, any other questions for members of the public? Okay, here in Seana, thank you very much, Kat. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you. See you next week. I'll drop some links into the chat.
Next week, okay. We'll see you next week.
I just can't get enough.
Okay, moving on in our agenda, Councilmember Matt Wire staffer, Leitani, please go ahead.
Hi, aloha, Leitani Pelt here on behalf of Councilmember Matt Wire. Um, I've got a, a quick legislative update and then I'll, a bunch of follow-up from the last meeting in June. Um, so Councilmember has introduced Resolution 23-185, urging the city administration to support the development of the Kohala Loa Community Resilience Hub. I'll put the link to that in the chat and we expect for it to go, um, to the Housing Sustainability and Health Committee uh, for the August 23rd meeting, um, and that committee is chaired by Matt, so. Um. Following up from, uh, actually, there was a question earlier about, um, requesting an update on vacation rentals. And that question was actually posed, I think, to me last, uh, meeting. Uh, and so I checked in with DPP, Department of Planning and Permitting. And actually, they don't have that information. Their response is that, um, the response is that they are, currently the short-term rental enforcement branch is not able to run accurate reports for the requested data specific to a geographic area. And then in order to do that, they'd need to adjust their, uh, tracking system to compile the data. At the council level, um, on our end, I believe we can request a formal update presentation from DPP, but it might just be a general update on the program as a whole. Um, not exactly sure whose committee that would go to, but you know, we'll figure that out and, uh, float the idea to the other council members. Um, there was also a question about, uh, Phase Four Affordable Housing in Kohuku, which has been a longstanding issue, um, that basically because, uh, the Phase Four area is in a flood zone now, uh, that flooding issue needs to be addressed before anything can be built, uh, or anything can move forward. So in June, our office went out to meet with DOT, um, staff and community stakeholders to discuss the flooding issue and the DOT's project to put a covert there by the sugar mill. Uh, and then in July, our office met with the Army Corps of Engineers, KVA, and also, uh, uh, other city staff from the Department of Community Services to discuss avenues to, uh, address the flooding issue. So a few small steps along the way, but those will be important things to, um, to get out of the way, to pave the way for affordable housing there. Um, there was also a question about the Ha'ula Homestead Road property that the city, um, has there, um, you know, at the last meeting, Auntie Dottie noted that the RFP had not yet gone out. However, um, it is out, it is on the procurement website, the RFP. Um, and I'll put it into the chat, but it became available on July 24th with proposals due August 21st and the estimated period for evaluation, uh, and selection being August and September. Um, there was also a question, uh, about homeless count and, uh, concern interest that in time count seem to, uh, undercount the homeless population in Region Six and that this would lead to decrease in funding. Um, I got into contact with the Director of Partners in Care and she responded to say that, uh, she agrees that she thinks that there are more folks in the region than were counted. Um, but because of, they're only allowed to, uh, and this is per HUD, they're only allowed to count the people they visually see on the day of the count. You know, because of that and a lot of other factors, it, you know, it's difficult to get an accurate count. Um, but she did note that the point in time count is only one factor to determining funding. Other factors include the housing inventory, their annual progress reports to determine needs, and also the cause of, uh, cost of housing. Uh, on a year-to-year basis, Partners in Care gets around the same amount of general funding with slight increases year-to-year. And, uh, it's not broken down by community, so Region Six will not get a smaller amount of services due to the decrease in the, um, homeless discount there. And, uh, that I don't think any, I don't see any questions in the chat, but I'm happy to, um, take, uh, fill those questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions for board members? Okay, questions for members of the public in person here? Okay, members of, uh, questions for members of the public online, Catherine, I see your hand up. Please proceed with your question. Catherine, um, you have a question? Please proceed. Okay, we will. Okay, see, your hand just went up. So I'm assuming you have a question. Please proceed.
Yes, is it possible? We don't think that illegal vacation rentals have been fined or shut down in our area. They are absolutely booming. And, um, they seem to work with out impunity. If you look at the, um, Airbnb website, um, they're booming in VRVO, so we do to, to shut them down. They are pushing and pricing out our local families, our working people. What can we do, um, to shut them down? Because we don't think that, um, that DPP is actually coming down and shutting them down. I mean, LAIA now is, um, is a resort area. I think it's just crazy. Um, with the alumni magazines and the amount of people that give me information on, um, illegal vacation rentals, it's so sad. Thank you. Uh, it's, and our Hawaiian community is affected the worst. Uh, the other thing I did ask, and I don't know if it's possible to look into or to start to consider is, um, some people thought it would be good for the houseless, especially on our side, especially because we have so many Hawaiians to have agricultural communities for rehabilitation. Is that a possibility, uh, our understanding that would, that under map committee? Thank you.
Um, just really quickly, so I, I know that DPP is, I've seen, um, reports of people being fined for illegal vacation rental activities. So I'm, I'm sure they haven't, you know, I'm sure that's not even making the dent in the problem, but, but there is some action going on there. Um, uh, as far as the agricultural communities for rehabilitation, uh, that is the Housing Committee. So if there are any, uh, uh, Housing Sustainability and Health, so if there are any, I guess, examples of these kinds of communities and where they, that's been a, um, successful way to address homelessness, like, please send that to us and we can look into that. Any ideas for legislation, um, that could maybe be around that or funding opportunities to help facilitate that, um, by all means, send that to our, our office to look into, please.
Chair. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to move back to in person, please, please.
And this may be me being ignorant, not too sure. I was wondering what the community involvement is for the RFP process for the property on Ha'ula Homestead Road? I might have been reviewed in previous meetings, I'm not sure. My question is, what, what involvement does the community have? I mean, the surrounding neighbors form RFPs for the property?
It's how our Ha'ula community, Association President asks.
Um, that's a good question. I'm sorry, I don't have an answer to that.
Hi there, Sir Leitani. Um, this is a very, I think, in our community, it's been, uh, the RFP has been, uh, out two or three times now. Um. Consistently, people have wanted to, that, that applied for the RFP, wanted to put in a transitional housing. And this community stood up and said, no, not in this neighborhood. And so we respect that and are supporting that. And we, the community association, actually, the Ha'ula Julio Ha'ula is putting in an application for this housing, for affordable and senior housing.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other, um, questions for the time from members of the public in person? Any online? Catherine, are you back? Your hands still up.
Oh, sorry.
Any other question?
Oh, she put her hand down.
Oh, okay, nevermind. All right, thank you very much, Leitani. We'll see you next one. Okay, moving forward in our agenda, uh, Lewis House Representatives, Congresswoman Poot or Stafford? Do we have anyone from Jill or Jill's office here, online?
Hi, good evening.
Oh, hey, David.
Good evening, Chair, and, uh, Rep Tokura sends her congratulations to all the new board members. Uh, my name is David Taga from her Hawaii District Office. Uh, Rep Tokura, of course, joins everyone in sending our aloha and prayers to everyone on Maui and all of our friends and family there, uh, who are going through such a terrible time. She will be on Maui, uh, very soon to, uh, see what's happening there and making sure that every available federal resource makes it to our, our friends and family on Maui. Um. Tokura, in your town, these are a series of events where Rep Tokura and her casework staff will be coming into the community to offer in-person assistance for anyone that needs, uh, casework, federal casework. So these are issues anyone may have, for example, with the IRS, veterans benefits, passport issues, social security, uh, anything like that, Rep Tokura and her staff are here to help you. Um, we have, uh, tentatively scheduled for August, uh, 22nd in the North Shore, uh, at 4:30 PM. Uh, it's tentative right now just because of what's happening in, in Maui. So some things may change, but we do plan to be in the North Shore community in person uh, for anyone that may need in-person assistance. If you can't make it, you can always go to our website and fill out the online form. Our website. Our website is tokuda.house.gov. Fill out the form called Help with a Federal Agency. So you can just submit your request there. And our caseworkers are here to help you. If you, for anything you might need with the federal government. And lastly. Anyone in your community that may be seeking a nomination to a military academy. That process is happening now. It goes until October of this year. So you can also, again, go to our website, tokuda.house.gov. You can submit your application through our office. For consideration of a congressional nomination. That's all I have. Happy to take any questions. The audio is a, is a little. Not so good, but I'll, I'll try my best to make sure I understand your question and respond as best as I can.
Okay, thank you. Questions for board members?
In regards to the North Shore Federal Government Health Day. Where are you planning to hold that meeting?
We are still trying to finalize the location. But we do plan to be in the North Shore community. We will be sure to make sure that everyone. But we publicize that as soon as we can make, confirm those details. But we'll make sure we get the information to the board definitely. And we'd appreciate your help to spreading, spreading that word.
Okay, we would like to offer our site for you to come here and provide that kind of support. In Haula, at the Haula Community Center, if you need a place to go.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for board members? All right, how about members of the community, questions for David? US Congress, the United States Office? Okay, sure, please, please come on. David, the question is, I guess about the North Shore meeting for the venue. Are you guys, what is your expect?
I'm sorry, Chair. I didn't quite hear that. Yes.
The question is, in regards to your North Shore meeting, I guess the venue that you folks looking at, how many people are you expected to have? We've offered our, our community center, but a question for the public was, how many people do you have? So that they have a space that can accommodate the number that you ever expected. So. The easiest question is, how many people are you expecting?
Well, I mean, we, we want to serve as many people as possible. I. I, I would hope, you know, maybe 50 or more, 50 to, we just don't know how many people. Will get to come out. Because we always offer the online option for people to submit their requests for assistance. But we come out to the community because it's important. And we also know that sometimes not everyone is good with the computer. Or sometimes it's a little easier just to talk to a person. So that's why we want to make sure we offer that option for everybody. So as far as how many, I mean, we hope. We want people, Rep Tokuda wants people to know that you always have an advocate on your side if you have an issue with the federal government. That you always have her as an advocate on your side to assist with that.
Hi, David. This is Dottie Kelly Caddick, and you probably know that we have requested an earmark. Through Raptakuda, and we just wanted to know, that's for the Pola Lula Community Resilience Hub. We have completed the EA and design and we are looking for help through earmarks. For construction in 2024. And I read her list and we are on the list for earmarks, but I just wanted to update how that's going.
I don't have an update right now on how that process is going, but I can certainly look into that and provide an update. At the next month's board meeting, if that would be okay.
Perfect, thank you. Questions for members of the public, please?
I have a question regarding the North Shore meeting. Is it, should we call in to sign out as an individual? And we allow a certain time to communicate with the council, whoever's running for.
So David, the question is, in regards to the North Shore meeting, do we need to call ahead to reserve a time? Or do we just show up? What, please kind of explain that process to us.
Sure. No, you do not have to call and make a reservation or anything like that. When we do finalize the location, we'll make sure you folks know exactly when and where it'll be. Just please show up and we'll. Rep Tokuda is planning to be there along with our Office of Caseworkers. We just want people to know this is for individual issues with casework. Meaning if you personally have some issue, for example, with your veterans benefits. Or with social security, then that's how we, that's called casework and we're there to do intake. We won't be able to solve your issue on the spot, but we can definitely do intake. And get you started on making those inquiries on your behalf. So no, you don't need an appointment, but. The person seeking the casework has to be there. So you can't submit it on behalf of a friend or something like that. So if you have yourself an issue. That's what we encourage you to please come. And if you're not able to make it. You can always call our district office. Or go to our website online and submit your request for assistance that way. So we're just having many ways for. To offer our assistance to the community.
What's the, thank you. Do you have a phone number?
Sure. Our district office phone number is 808-746-6220. And our website again is tokuda.house.gov.
Okay, David, my name is Alice Saratsky, and I would like to plant a seed. We have a lot of problems out here with illegal vacation rentals. Our people on Maui have lost their housing. And I heard today on one of the. Things that government was talking about. That the federal government provides housing for people while they're being rebuilt. If, if they don't have jobs over on Maui and they can come here to live while their. Buildings are being reconstructed and the federal government is going to provide housing assistance. We could put them off in a vacation rental. Because they would talk to hotel rooms. But I thought if they compared the case to rentals they like at a home. It would be more convenient for families and that would take care of some of our. Housing issues here as well as helping the people on Maui. So I just wanted to plant that seed. If the federal government is going to be providing assistance with their housing, that maybe they could. Use the vacation rentals.
David, did you get that?
Yes, I, I think I, I think I did. And maybe I'll defer to the, to the governor's representative on this one, but I know. Governor Green was on Maui. He had a press conference today and he wasn't just making an open call to everyone on all islands to. You know. Do what they can to offer housing assistance to our friends and family on Maui. But maybe the governor's representative can speak a little more on, on that.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have any other questions from members of the? So David, the question is, with the federal government, they're putting money into housing for displaced people by fires. I think, I think more specifically, you could report back on the FEMA and their programs and how they do it. And how that would happen. I heard Governor talk about. Grants for people that are displaced first and foremost, then rental assistance after that, and then the placement to case. To be put into federal programs. But this question specifically is for besides rental assistance. If they would, you know, bring money to the people that will be forced to move places. Did you test that, David?
Not, not all of it. I'm sorry, Chair.
Okay, just if, if we were to host displaced families, would the federal government be paying the hosts?
Oh, I see. Okay. I, I don't know the answer to that one, but that's something I can, I can look at. I know FEMA is, is beginning to. Go to Maui and, and. Provide some assistance directly to the residents, but I can certainly just make that inquiry to see what, what that would. If, if the federal resources do flow that way to. Folks offering their homes on this island.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions from members of the public in person? All right, moving on to online. Any other questions, members of the public online? Casey, your hand is up. The other question, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Before. Senator Representative Takuda had been very active in helping track down certain monies. Again and again, federal money is allocated for things like Hawaiian education. And even though we have a large Hawaiian population, we get very little of it. And we've tried to track it down before, things for, help for farmers. Is it possible that you can help us track down when these big funds come through? Where they're going, is our area getting any of the funds? For instance. Transportation money and we don't get it to repair the roads and bridges are very, very little of it. But also the education funds and specifically for Hawaiian education has been. It looks great, but then we get very little of it. So we'd love for you to actually track down. Or help us to track how much, what federal funds we act, actually comes to our side. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, David. We'll move forward with the presentation.
Thank you.
Person. Governor's Representative Crystal?
Yes, yes, I'm here, Chair. I'm here. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Chair and the rest of the board members. Just a few updates from the last. Couple of months. First in July, the governor did sign an emergency proclamation to address the affordable housing crisis. And this emergency proclamation will help advance the safe construction of thousands of critically needed public. Low-income affordable workforce housing units. And the purpose of the EP is to help advance the safe construction of these very critically needed housings. Housing units. The affordable housing crisis in Hawaii has reached state of emergency. The Department of Business Economic Development and Tourism, or DBED. Finds that our state will require an additional 50,000 plus homes by the, by 2025. And so our statewide effort to address the affordable housing crisis is focused on three main priorities. Which are prioritize, protect and provide housing for our local people. Invest in critical infrastructure and development of new housing units. And collaborate and coordinate with key federal, state, county and private sector stakeholders and organizations. Streamline the process. I'm aware you guys have, I think everyone has seen the. Has seen the coverage on the new emergency housing proclamation. And I'll also drop the link to the, our website and. And the proclamation itself, if you would like to read the full document. And secondly, I know the. The terrible wildfire, you know, has been on everyone's minds and hearts lately, the one that destroyed much of Lahaina. The governor, Governor Green is currently in Maui or traveled there this morning. And was responding to the wildfire emergency. Today, he did issue a fourth emergency proclamation shortly after arriving back in the state. And this proclamation helps to facilitate response, recovery and rebuilding for West Hawaii. It will allow. For provisions of healthcare services by out-of-state doctors, nurses, respiratory therapists. So they can practice on the island of Maui during the emergency period. Governor Green recently held a press conference today with the mayor, congressional representative and senator and other state officials. With updates on the ongoing relief efforts for Maui. He did announce that President Biden had approved the state's request for a federal disaster declaration. And so to, to go into David's point earlier. And I think one of the questions by the constituents is that. There will be assistance offered for. For housing and financial relief for a lot of the families that have been affected. And so. He did send out a plea. Governor Green and a lot of, and the other state officials did send out a plea to hotels. To our, to families, to. Just the whole community to just all work together and open, open their homes if they have room to house. Because we will need everyone's support and effort in rebuilding Lahaina and Maui as a whole. And I know our office has received a lot of, a lot of requests and inquiries about how to offer assistance. So I do have a couple of numbers for everybody. If you would like to donate or inquire about how to donate or how to help or volunteer. You can contact HAIMA, which is the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency at 808-733-4300. Extension eight, five eight two. Or you can contact the Maui Emergency Management Agency and their number is 808-270-7285. You can also go online to our website at governor.hawaii.gov. And to see more updates, ongoing updates about. The natural disaster in Maui. And I'll drop the links to all these things here, but those are just the updates. Our, our office is focused on. Working with, working with the whole state and county officials in Maui to address. The damages and the families that have been affected. So that's all for today and we'll, I'll take any questions, I'll field any questions and try to provide answers or if not, I'll take them with me and. Provide answers at the next meeting. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Questions for board members?
Last but not least, the Maui emergency number.
Crystal, could you repeat the Maui emergency number, please?
I'm sorry, you, what was the question? The emergency numbers? I couldn't catch it. Sorry.
Seven zero seven two eight five.
Was it two seven zero? And seven two three five?
Yes, that is the Maui Emergency Management Agency and they are the boots on the ground. And they're the ones that are responsible, that are responsible with the coordination of all the relief efforts and assistance that is. Going into Maui. So they're their best person to contact if you would like to donate or offer your time or volunteer. Offer any assistance.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hearing and seeing them online. Do we have any questions for you members of the public online? Casey, your hand is up. If you have a question, please proceed.
Yes. Hi, Crystal. I wasn't sure. I thought it was you. Maybe not that I asked. So people. So people, uh, about higher income jobs and what are you doing to support them? For instance, film, TV, music, having our, our musicians learn their streaming, get their streaming revenues, so supporting our very talented musicians and music industry. And, um, secondly, that would come into our housing crisis. Uh, when people are paid more, can afford, uh, better housing? So your economic and job structure is key. Many of us know that the study that you cited about how many more DBED studies, about how many more houses you need is totally bogus. That that's pro-big construction and that, as you know, that the population has been declining. So is there a way that we can get a realistic, um, housing assessment from DBED? That would be one. Um, what are you doing to shut down illegal vacation rentals? There are many things that the state could do and that is, has been a horrendous problem on, um, our side and, and coastal areas, but it's ripping apart this area. And with illegal vacation rentals and this horrible emergency, all of these vacation, illegal vacation rentals, the people have, in a, in a big emergency, they have no kits, no extra food and water, no plans, nowhere to go. And previously, when we've had tsunami alerts or hurricane alerts, coming a maya house, highway has been packed. Now with all these extra cars from all these choke illegal vacation rentals, um, you know, we think if we have an emergency, it would be deadly. And so there are many reasons that these should be shut down. And there's a lot of concern that the governor has not stepped up and done anything to shut them down. Instead, first, this build, 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 build will be over carrying capacity. So are you going to have a carrying capacity study that is unbiased and comprehensive for the islands? That's usually key for any economic planning or any tourism planning. Um, thank you, I, there are multiple questions within that. But it's more complicated than, than, than has been stated. Thank you so much for looking into these issues.
Thank, thank you Casey, um, I do apologize, I know you did ask, um, a couple like similar questions at the last, at the last meeting, but I was thinking with the, the last, this whole week has just been, our office has just been really focused on Maui and providing and handling the inquiries that are coming and providing assistance. So I was not able to get the answers, um, readily for me to provide today. But I will go back, I will get answers for your three questions here about the DBED study, about higher income jobs such as, you know, film and TV, and then also the illegal vacation rentals, which I know is a hot issue. So, um, I will take these back and I will come with some questions for, or some answers for you at the next meeting, if that's okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course, mahalo, mahalo, thank you.
Thank, thank you, do we have any other questions from members of the, of the community online? I think there isn't none, um, any for members of that meeting in person? I think there isn't enough, oh, one, that one, yes.
Back to, uh, moving to the state. Um, is it, what is the challenge? I'm stuck in the [inaudible 0:24:23]. So my question is, it's the state government from Hawaii. Waiting.
Okay, Crystal, this question is specific for us, um, emergency plan and safety even for people like Kahuku. Apparently, the current fallout place or evacuation place is the Kuhua Elementary School, unfortunately, which is next to a wind turbine and is unsafe. And so the question is if there is any plan by Governor, as a, for plan B, place, um, input specifically into Kahuku. Cause we know we have, we're gonna have the hub here in Maui nearby, specifically for Kahuku.
Alright, thank, thank you, um, just, just to reiterate the question, just so I, it's, um, it's accurate. So the question is, um, what is the plan? It's in regards to emergency planning, specifically for Kahuku. Um, are there, is there a plan B as the current fallout place is next to the wind turbine and is unsafe? If there were ever a natural emergency or natural disaster to happen, is that the question?
That is correct.
Perfect, um, I will, um, I do not have the answer to that, but I will get some answers for you for the next meeting, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Where do they go, where would they, they're going to provide the reclamation bonds to take those non-recyclable blades out of them? They're not there yet, we need to know what their plan is, I mean, those, those provided. When this first start to build on these [inaudible 0:27:58].
Okay, the next question, you can report on this for the next meeting. Is it in regards to AES and the reclamation bonds for recycling or the non-recyclable wind blades, removal of the non-recyclable with, um, turbine blades? Question on where that is at, is that, so if you can report to that on the next, we would appreciate it.
Um, Chair, do you mind repeating that? Um, I got bits and pieces, apologies.
I'll, I'll type it into the chat.
Thank you so much, thank you.
No worries. Okay, moving on, we will move next to Senator Awaz, um, representative, I believe we have Samantha before.
Aloha Chair, how are you? Good seeing you, aloha board members. Hi, so a, a couple updates with regards, we're waiting for DOT to get back with us on a couple of projects that Senator Awaz is working with them on. Number one, uh, from a board member, Dottie, uh, with forming a task force, uh, for, um, Kam Highway, uh, so we spoke to them today, we're working out the details on that. Senator Awaz would like somebody from Board of Water Supply, from NOAA, um, of course, a couple of the board members. Uh, so it might take a little bit of time, but we are working on that. Also, uh, we're waiting for Department of Transportation to, um, give us a status update on the Sand Savers project slated for the Kualoa area. And, uh, mm-hmm, and then, uh, also, uh, Crystal have raised crosswalks, uh, or speed humps that he's working on in the Ka'ava area on Kam Highway near Port Kinney Kinney Road. And then, uh, Kahana Bay on Kam Highway, fronting Kahana Valley Road. So that is what we're, uh, working with, Department of Transportation. Um, and a couple of things with the city, under some raised crosswalks in front of Kahuku Elementary and fronting Ka'ava Elementary as well. Um, as of right now, that's all that I have, um, I'm here to take any questions or anything that the board has.
Perfect, thank you. Board members? Okay, question for members of the public in person? Yes.
Um, don't mess with John, uh, because there's no public information on this could be, uh, illegal [inaudible 0:28:58] behind school. Uh, center, I'm not going to get thanked to us and get [inaudible 0:29:08].
Okay, so the question is, um, in regards to illegal [inaudible 0:30:05] behind the Kualoa Elementary School. Up on the hill, um, oh, do you have anything on that, Crystal? There's supposed to be a follow-up from Senator.
Yeah, actually, we did contact the school, um, uh, we didn't hear back from them yet. So, uh, do you know that that is still an ongoing issue as of now? Uh, we contacted the school last week, but I know through the hustle of the bus transportation and school starting, we didn't get a call back yet. So do we know that that's an ongoing issue?
This is an ongoing issue.
Okay.
Thank Noah, he will, he will [inaudible 0:31:08]. You know, he's in the line on [inaudible 0:31:15]. Uh, Senator, uh, Awaz, you're [inaudible 0:31:22].
Yes, it is an ongoing issue.
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up at the school, uh, tomorrow and then get Senator Awaz back in the discussion.
Thank you, okay, next question?
One question about the crosswalk, have they ever considered putting a crosswalk by seven eleven?
Question is, um, have, have DOT ever considered putting a crosswalk across from seven eleven by [inaudible 0:32:19]?
I will ask them, across of seven eleven, where?
By [inaudible 0:32:28].
Oh, okay. I will ask them, I'll ask Senator as well, and then if he doesn't know, then I'll, uh, reach out to DOT.
Can I second that request? Please, a third, there's been deaths there.
Thank you, okay, any other questions from members of the public in person? Okay, moving to online, Catherine, I see your hand up, if you have a question, please proceed.
Just wanted to actually mention, why are there not raised crosswalks where we have had deaths? That doesn't make any sense. Uh, and right around where seven eleven is, is, is a hotspot for accidents. There also could benefit one down at the end of Kukuna, which is where a bus stop is, where the seal is, where it's used hundreds of times a day. So I'm not understanding the selection process. Those are two spots in my community that I wonder about, why not? Thank you.
Thank you so much, I'll follow up with Senator Awaz, and also I'll reach out to DOT with those two areas, uh, where it was mentioned, um, in seven eleven and then the end of Kukuna.
Thank you, Casey, your hand is up, please proceed to answer your question.
Um, yes, can you, um, give our thanks to the Senator for the funds he's got for education in our area? Awesome, really appreciate it. Um, but before, he had put on a really powerful video on his, um, Facebook, uh, about illegal vacation rentals and people suffering and like yay. Um, they are just booming all up our side and how all up and down and forcing local families out. And they're, um, you know, the enrollment's going down at Kahuku. Um, and it's especially in our Hawaiian community, is there anything he can do to help? Um, as he knows, the number one paid, uh, top paid lobbyists um, at the legislature are, is Airbnb. So, um, how can we stop this and, um, it comes for local families? We would, happy to, for him to help, he knows a lot of this and, and any suggestions, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, um, Senator did, uh, try to issue a bill to, um, put those restrictions on, um, to protect a, a lot of the incoming that is coming in and, you know, pretty much a lot of the overage of population. Um, so I know that he's going to be introducing something again, uh, in the twenty twenty-four legislative session. So, uh, maybe we can present it at the board and maybe get, uh, board support um, and, uh, take that back to the legend, propose it again. So I'll mention that to Senator Awaz and, uh, we'll see what we can do to collaborate with the board to have a stronger push for it, uh, in the twenty twenty-four session.
Mahalo.
Okay, thank you, any questions from members of the public online? Not any, any in person, sure.
You know, a topic of, what is the, uh, crosswalk by seven eleven? That was brought up many years ago and he's still bringing it up and he's still not putting it in. But now again, we have a new senator, let's see what he's gonna do. To commit by putting and crosswalk in, it's very important. People running across the street, cars coming by, he's not stopping. But if you put the crosswalk and you standing there, a law is [inaudible 0:32:52]. So I'm coming on the car, have to stop, let the people cross. This is seven eleven, running [inaudible 0:33:00]. I mean, hopefully it doesn't happen, somebody don't get hit, get killed. I don't, that's what the [inaudible 0:33:10]. What is all, all they have to do is put [inaudible 0:33:15]. As a sample, but this was brought up many years ago.
To summarize, this was a statement by a community member about the crosswalk being requested many, many years ago. Are we waiting for that back? Before this happens, so we would love to see what Senator Awaz can do.
Thank you so much, I'll, I'll let Senator Awaz know in the morning and we'll get DOT on the phone, uh, first thing tomorrow, so thank you.
Thank you, alright, any other questions for people in person? Okay, here it is, see now, we're moving forward to answer, we're moving forward to see you from now on.
Yes, thank you so much, aloha, everyone.
Okay, moving on to our agenda, um, Representative, uh, from our house today, Sean Quinlan, nice to you there, please proceed.
Aloha, good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, obviously, as Gov's rep touched on it, this has been a horrible three days for, for Maui and for Hawaii. Um, a lot of rebuilding to do. The, the damage is really incredible, I think it's beyond what, what people realize. I've been working with the Tourism Authority to make sure that we get as many of the tourists outside of the impacted zone, so that we're not looking to house them or feed them and we can concentrate, uh, on our local residents. Um, and I think a, a big focus for myself and for the Tourism Authority over the next few months is how do we get operations at Gona Poli started back up again? Because there are, there are a lot of people right now who essentially don't have a job because we can't run hotel operations on West Maui at all, so we wanna, we wanna really move past that. A lot of people have talked about Airbnb. It's something that I think for the first time in, in about a decade, I started working on at the state level. Last year, I had a few different proposals. Um, but I think what it comes down to is that we need to give each individual county the explicit authority to regulate non-conforming use permits, to regulate resort zones, to amortize Airbnb's uh, vacation rentals as they see fit, because the county should have zoning power. And, uh, ultimately, those decisions are made by elected officials. And I think each county has different needs here, uh, in Honolulu County, we, our biggest problem is illegal Airbnb. In Maui County, their biggest problem are legal county-zoned Airbnbs. Kauai has a pretty good handle on things. Um, and Big Island, I think, is still figuring out whether or not they want short-term rentals to be part of the mixture. Um, because if you look at places like, uh, Puna, for example, vacation rentals are a big part of the economy down there and housing is very cheap and plentiful. But if you look at the west side of Hawaii Island and you looked at Kona, uh, housing is very expensive and in very short supply. So, um, they're also struggling to kind of deal with it. So I'm working, uh, this off-season or rather this interim with all the different counties, stakeholders, uh, legal renters, there are, you know, we have some resort zones, we have one resort zone in our district at, uh, at Turtle Bay, which actually I think is the most appropriate place you could have a resort zone. Um, so I'm not really worried about that, but we have to really tackle this problem head-on because the status quo is not working for anybody. So that is my report and I'm ready for questions.
Okay, thank you, questions for board members? Questions from members of the public in person? Any questions from members of the public online, Casey, your hand up, please proceed to answer your question.
Uh, mahalo Sean for all your great work, um, yeah, the, the things that you proposed for illegal vacations last year, we'd love to see them go forward. And a- as I said, that, you know, that probably the top lobbyist at the legislature is Airbnb. And then their former top lobbyist, um, Blake Kishiro is now the governor's, um, senior advisor. So this is very, very concerning, so thank you for the work on that. Um, anything more? Uh, last year, you put, I had some excellent bills, um, from your committee, the carrying capacity bill seems to be absolutely. Seems to be absolutely key because in Maui, you know, cars were backing up and couldn't get through in an emergency. Our side is going to be much, much worse than that if we have an emergency. Food, water, all that. So the Carrying Capacity Bill, your Green Fee Bill for, to pay for, would that go forward? And, you know, years ago, you put the knucklehead tourist bill in, where they had to pay for, tourists who went on illegal hikes had to be paid to be rescued. And are you going to be looking again at restructuring Hawaii Tourist Authority? And making the focus on residents again, as you said? And how can we support you? Because your bills were great. I believe the majority of the people in Hawaii liked them, and they didn't go ahead. And of course, again, diversifying the economy. And I know that you're on the Economic Development Committee, what you were before. So how can we get those higher-income jobs so people can afford? Again, all those. And thank you for what you did starting last year, and how can we make sure we support you this year? Thank you.
I will be brief, or I will attempt to be brief. Yes, we are going to restructure the Tourism Authority to make sure that we put local residents first. I'll either restructure them, or something more drastic may happen. Because I feel that it's so important. And I think that the nature of tourism is changing, and I think that the nature of how communities experience tourism is changing. Because there is no such thing as privileged local knowledge now. Everything is out there. It's on Yelp, it's on Instagram. They know all the secret surf spots that were just ours before. So we need to be cognizant of that. And as far as, you know, economic diversification goes, we are working on it. But I think it's difficult to do more than take small bites of the apple, quite frankly. And I think that for the foreseeable future, tourism will continue to be our number-one economic driver. So it's important that we strike a good balance between our needs, our wants, and the reality of where a lot of our tax dollars come from.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Marley, I see your hand up. Please proceed. Do you have a question?
Hi, my name is Marley Komokaala Miller. And I had a question. While we're discussing it regarding the Maui fires, how will the state notify the residents in the event that cell towers go down? You know, like how in Maui, the cell towers went down, so a lot of people weren't getting alerts on their phones. So how will the state notify residents of a wildfire or any other type of natural disaster coming, you know, like tsunami? Will the, you know, the emergency sirens, will they still work if electric goes out?
So that's a great question. I don't know what kind of power backup the emergency sirens have. I would say that I think by the time an emergency has taken down the cell towers, it's probably too late, whether it's a flood, which we experienced a couple of years ago, and in Haleiwa, got really close to being a disaster. I think that this was a really unique case, quite frankly. I don't think we've ever seen anything like this, that amount of wind with those dry conditions bearing down. It was like, it was like a sword, a fire sword, pointed directly at Lahaina. I talked to one of my friends, he's actually the senator for the area, and he said he was just hanging out at his brother's place. And I don't know if he got a message to evacuate, or they just saw the flames. They jump in the car and they drove away. But he told me that if he hadn't been in a car, if he'd been on foot, that he wouldn't have made it out, because the fire was traveling faster than, you know, anybody could run. And this is something that I thought about a lot when we had the floods a couple of years ago.
I'm just asking because our area gets a lot of wind, right? And our electric, even with the winds lately, it's been flickering. So, you know, I just want to know how the state's gonna notify us in the event of electricity.
Specifically, from a technological standpoint, there is no way. Not unless you have some kind of FM, AM, ham radio. But cellphone towers are by and large the way that all of our emergency systems work and how everyone's going to communicate. So if the towers go down, there is no way.
Crank batteries.
Unless CM knows something. I don't know.
CM?
Yeah.
No more CM.
Sorry, CM.
Jumped shit.
Oh. Oh, 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 God, okay. Yeah, we can look into that. I mean, I know that for myself, I bought myself and my mom and dad these little Chinese radios on Amazon. They're like forty, forty-five bucks. And they get the police and fire channels, so that if I do lose cellphone, at least I can still hear what the emergency is doing. So I can highly recommend those.
Are you putting these in the chat?
Yeah.
I don't know. I can go on Amazon and look through my history.
Are they Noah radios?
Amazon, yeah.
Uh, there's this one brand of Chinese radio on Amazon that's very, very popular. And it'll be like the first thing, one of the first results that pops up when you search for like emergency radio.
Step that, oh, emergency radios, I don't think. So everyone go to Amazon? And search for emergency radios. Is it Huawei or HU?
Yeah, it's Huawei. That's right. You're right. That's the one. It's Huawei. Yeah.
H U E I. Yeah, my hand radio, it's the cheapest original. It's the one for you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions from members of the public online? Okay, any other questions from members of the public in person?
One thing about ham radios is we are urging people in this area, if you are interested at all in being a ham radio operator, we're trying to extend that across all of Koholaloa, so we are all covered. And we have the free booklets, and we have a free online course. And we have radios. And we have an emergency communication center. So we would like for you to play a part in that. Just contact Ella or myself or anyone here with the Hau'ola communities.
The third meeting of the month.
Yes, we have a Hau'ola Emergency Preparedness Meeting every month. It's the
Third Chief.
Tuesday, the fourth Tuesday. Okay, fourth Tuesday of every month, right here at Hau'ola Community Center. Six o'clock. Six o'clock. And anybody from any community in Koholaloa is welcome to join us.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions from members of the public in person? Okay, hearing and seeing them, thank you very much, Sean. Appreciate it. We'll see you next month. Okay, moving on the agenda. We will skip the presentations, and we are now into public input and community announcements. So we have one. Members of the public, please come forward, make your announcements. We have two minutes.
Sorry.
My name is Bessie Komokaala Iina. I represent the Kohololoa Beach Mermaids. And we've gone through city council. So I just want to bring this to your attention, is that I want to bring to your attention concern of our community regarding park laws being broken at Kohololoa Beach Park due to the issue of permits and inconsistency of park gates being open and locked. On June 23rd to the 24th, thirteen tour buses for two days at Kohololoa Beach Park offloaded their customers to picnic and swim. On two busy park days of the community, Friday and Saturday, this tour company set up a tent in the section of the park that does not permit overnight tents or camping. Yet this group was permitted to leave a big tent overnight with all its picnic tables. When confronted, the tour bus company confirmed that they were issued a permit under a educational purpose by Department of Parks and Recreation, employing Mr. Kanamo Tulsa. The laws were broken to accommodate this tour company. Mr. Tulsa is a member of the Leder Hau'ola community. The owner of the tour company is also a member of this community. It is also noted that when permits are given to a local families or churches of this community, the park gates are not locked according to the park rules. The park gates are left open until late in the evening, allowing cars to drive in and out of the park, causing noise nuisance of residents nearby. Permits issued to Kohololoa Beach Park should not be provided by a resident of the community. It causes unfairness and preferential treatment. It is noticed that the gates of Kohololoa Beach Park are open late, sometimes at eight fifteen, eight thirty, nine AM, even as late as ten AM, and close as late as ten PM on various days. The inconsistency of the management of Kohololoa Beach Park are a matter of concern to our community. And we ask if the management team responsible for Kohololoa Beach Park address this. Now, we love this community. We, as the mermaids, we swim here, we exercise, we do a lot at between six and eight o'clock in the morning. So I hope there is some consideration that can look into this problem. Mahalo.
Thank you. I do not see Kat from the mayor's office or any timing. I know that there is a bill going before city council currently in regards to the parks and its usage. So that is being worked on right now. I don't know if we're agreeing with the current form of how it is, but currently structured as a bill with no specific list of parks. But that is being worked on, and that would alleviate some of the problems. But I will contact the timing and Kat and kind of issue that, because they're not online right now. So I can follow up for you and just make sure that that information gets passed on to them, and they can put that. No problem. Any other public announcements?
Just quickly, I'll mention again that Hau'ola Community Center is a site where people can get help with rent and utilities, net quests, and food. We have five food programs. So please share that with neighbors, people who have needs. Also, our breakfast is tomorrow, the Kukuna Breakfast. And we have a speaker, and it's going to be Papa Olis food again. So, and we also have a SNAP Barbers Market every Saturday now with the swap meet. And that's at the Kohololoa Resilience Hub site on Homestead and Hainanua Road. That's every Saturday, ten to two. And the last thing I'll mention is, we have a great opportunity. Mark your calendar. Tuesday, August 29th, we have all of our experts related to the Kohololoa Community Resilience Hub here in this room, showing you the final design and EA information, the environmental assessment. We have our technical assistance people from the Department, the US Department of Energy, that will be here talking about the various green energies that we'll be using at the Resilience Hub site. And so it's your opportunity to come out, and this is at twelve o'clock, and lunch will be served. So twelve o'clock, August 29th, Tuesday, right here at Hau'ola Community Center. Come on out.
All right, thank you very much. Any community announcements from members of the public in person?
I'm Amy Nielsen. I am the executive director for Key Project in Kohololoa. Here, I'm from Mauna Kea, Grace, and Miss Bahi, and grateful to be here. I moved to Mauna Kea about two years ago. Smiley's going home, and happy to be here and to be able to serve this place as much as possible. I just wanted to give you a few updates on this, this Hau'ola project. It's already in Kohololoa. But if you're ever out there, you know, come on by. We have a body donation drive happening tomorrow at Key Project from four to eight PM. Non-perishables only because the container ships out on Tuesday. We also are having a WIG grow, Women Empowerment and Global Opportunities. A WILUP for Good Score Growth at Key Project. This is going to be five Saturdays in the month of September. And then we are having an event on August 25th at five PM showcasing unseen footage from the Na'ama'aka'auka'a'aina filming of the Hua'ula offensive across and loy. And then the last one is, I heard on my staff, we're working on development programming at Key Project. We did receive funding from Castle, and so we're going to be pushing out that work of development programming in the month of September. And so while we just aren't bringing this stuff to start this event, so we're excited for that. And the last but not least, if you didn't want to come to the fire ads, that has been a huge issue. We've been pushing out some programs at Key around that, but basically, things much smaller than a regular tropical fire. I'm sure we've all have been by it by everyone. These are much tinier. And we have identified two sites so far, one at Kukuna'oa Road, and then another at PCC. And so we're trying to engage our community as much as possible, because they do bite, they live in the trees. They will rain down on you, but you're cooking your pork and a candy, which is very problematic. And the state has not had much friends controlling these things, but it's really important to test our yards. So I just wanted to give you folks an announcement. At Key Project, it's already on the map. August 21st, we'll be having a town hall with the district. We're going to be talking about funky frogs, which are present in Ma'una'ala as well as Kohololoa Valley. And then coconut rhinoceros beetles. So it's going to be a really good engaging conversation about emphasis speaking, and just wanted to call your attention to the little fire ads, because they are soaring through Ko'olopokon and Ko'olopon. As we speak, and if you love to be outside, it's a problem for you. But mahalo, mahalo to the group for allowing me to be here.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just quickly, one more. My name is Amy Nielsen. I'm a community nutritionist out here. And I am pleased to announce that we are finally going to have a WIC back out here in the community. We'll be back out here two days a week, specifically in this community. We are also going to have Blue Zone Project back out here again. So look for those two projects out there as well. Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements, please?
Just wanted to let you all know that the mayor is accepting donations, quoting everything for Lahaina. And the room is so packed, and we're working on getting a semi truck to come out and pick up all the goods and take to all of a cargo. And they extended it until Tuesday, August 15, four PM. So mahalo.
Any other announcements from members of the public in person? Do we have any announcements from members of the public online?
Sure. Yeah, I'm Dave Crepp. I'm interim dean for academic affairs at Winward Community College. We are trying to offer classes up at the Hau'ola Community Association Facility. And we have Charity Fono'i Moana. She's kind of coordinating that for us. But if there are folks interested in taking classes, they are hybrid classes, that involve some face-to-face interaction at the Community Association Facility, as well as online delivery, it might be useful for them to contact me, and I'll connect them with Charity on all of that.
Charity.
Great. Perfect.
And it's on the Hau'ola Community Facebook page. Next Tuesday night, I'm here at six. Thanks, Dave, for saying that. And there's another meeting here with Charity Fono'i Moana at six o'clock on next Tuesday night. Anyone that wants to sign up? We're trying to make this a free program, just like last year. You can sign up for a Pell Grant, or Winward might be able to get a grant for this. But we've been offering these programs since last year, and it's a very exciting lineup of classes. And we need at least, how many people, Dave?
We need, well, at least twelve students to enroll.
Right.
We might be able to get by with a little bit less, but, yeah.
And it's right here at Ha'ula Community Center and it's from 6:00 to 7:30, one night a week. And then the other night is hybrid. It's at home on your computer. The courses are an AA business degree and they vary a lot. This upcoming courses are, one is on digital tools, another is composition, another is psychology. And what's the last one? Math? Okay.
Yeah, I had, I'm not, I have to look at the full, full perspective. But for this, this semester, we're looking at English as a first eight weeks class that starts August 2021. And then a second eight-week class in computer science. And then we have other classes offered in the spring. So we're hoping this takes off because we'd really like to reach out and connect to the, the North Shore community in taking classes through Winward Community College.
Thank you, guys.
Very good. All right. Any other community announcements? The last and final call. Okay, here in Inseanu, we kind of put the minutes. We kind of talked about $1,000 for board outreach, so we will go to board announcements. The next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 14th, 2023 at 6:30 p.m. With that, thank you everyone for coming. We are adjourned.